Hey, thanks for changing the clock. Whoever changed the clock? The one who came in here before was an hour behind still. Do we know if Matt's on his? All right, well, we'll get started. It is 1:00 PM. This is our regular city commission meeting, Tuesday, March 15th, 2022. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I believe it is Commissioner Cessna's turn to lead the pledge and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you have given us. We ask for your eternal forgiveness for our transgressions during this time of Lent. We come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin as we begin this meeting to help us make decisions, move our community forward in positive direction, be with all of our citizens in the community, but especially be with our first responders and watch over them and keep them safe. Also be with those that are suffering through the ravages of war and give them comfort and peace. And as we pray.
Amen. All right, first thing is the approval of the minutes. Was there any changes that need to be done there? All right, well, then those will stand as approved. Next, we have public comment. This is a time for anybody in the public to come up and talk about anything that's not going to be talked about later in the agenda. I ask you to come up, say your name, and then limit yourself to five minutes. Is there anybody who, any public comments? Be careful, you're getting close to public comment. Okay. All right, no public comments. Onto item 6A.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from local members of the American Legion to allow the mayor to proclaim March 15th, 2022, as Kansas American Legion Day in Garden City, Kansas.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve the proclamation as presented.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
Right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. And I believe I have the proclamation here to read. Is that correct? So I'll read it and then have something that come up and would be the best order. Let me read this and then if there's any comments. Okay. I'll read this, then comments, and if we want to do a picture, we can do a picture. So this is the proclamation. Whereas on March 15th, 1919, the American Legion was founded in Paris, France by members of the American Expeditionary Force. And whereas the American Legion was characterized by the United States Congress as a wartime veterans organization based on the four pillars of Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children and Youth. And whereas over the past 103 years, the American Legion has become a preeminent community service organization in the United States with more than 2.5 million family members and over 30,000 American Legion posts, units, and squadrons promoting a variety of programs that support the goals of the American Legion. And whereas over the past 103 years, the Kansas American Legion has become a preeminent community service organization in Kansas with more than 40,000 family members and over 500 Kansas American Legion post unit squadrons promoting a variety of programs that support the goals of the American Legion. And whereas Kansas acknowledged with a profound appreciation the special role that our American Legion members played in supporting our nation's wartime veteran organization based on the four pillars of Veterans Affairs, Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children and Youth. And whereas with gratitude for their inspiring patriotism and service to the United States, the city of Garden City extends profound appreciation to its American Legion members with the continued commitment to preserving and honoring the proud legacy for generations to come. Now therefore, I, Shannon L. Dick, Mayor of Garden City, Kansas, can do hereby proclaim March 15th, 2022, as the Kansas American Legion Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express the sincere appreciation and thanks for the American Legion service to our veterans, community, and country. Signed and sealed this day, 15th of March, 2022. All right, come forward and if you have anything to say, then I'll come on up.
My name's Ray Heineman. I'm the commander of the American Legion Post Number Nine here, and we appreciate you doing this for us. Governor Kelly has also proclaimed today throughout the state as American Legion Day also.
Excellent.
Mayor, you want to come down?
Yep.
Take a picture?
Come.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Vicky Harshberger Mosaic to allow the mayor to proclaim March 2022 as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Garden City, Kansas.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
And a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. And I have the proclamation here, and I'll read it, and then we'll have Vicky come up and talk a little bit. So the proclamation. Whereas the month of March 2022 has been designated as National Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in order to celebrate and recognize people with disabilities. And whereas a disability is a natural part of the human experience and in no way diminishes the right of people with disabilities to make choices, contribute to society, and experience in full the many blessings of the American society. And whereas family members, friends, and the community at large will all play a role in supporting people with disabilities as they pursue their dreams. And whereas the goals of this city properly include people with disabilities who realize full access to housing, employment, and their recreation activities which help create productive and satisfying lives and to live as independently as possible. Now therefore, I, Shannon L. Dick, Mayor of the city of Garden City, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in the city of Garden City and call upon the citizens of Garden City to observe the month with appropriate programs and activities. Furthermore, I encourage the citizens of Garden City to seek information from those organizations with expertise in matters concerning developmental disabilities. Signed and sealed this 15th day of March, 2022. All right, Vicky.
Thank you, everyone. According to the Council on Quality and Leadership, people, personal outcome data shows that people with intellectual and developmental disabilities are much more likely to be happy and healthy if they live in a community in which they feel they're equal members. And we, I think, are blessed here in Garden City to feel that. For National Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Month, we're celebrating the people we support by seeking our community partners to help welcome people with ADD and help them to lead bold and perhaps even more independent lives. And if anyone would like to know more information about our efforts at Mosaic here in Garden City, just give me a call at 620-275-9180 or visit our website at www.mosaicinfo.org, and you can find either mine or Scott's email there. So we just want to thank you all for taking this time.
Thank you, Vicky.
And I brought Katie today to help.
Hi, Katie.
I brought Katie to help accept the proclamation today.
Oh, come on, ladies.
Item 6C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo's request to change, to charge Jungle Run participants an entry fee. Kristi?
Yep. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. It's event season, so before you, we have a request from the Friends related to the Jungle Run Automobile Show to charge an entry fee. This will be the seventh annual Jungle Run Auto Show since its revival. And as all other Friends events, the proceeds go to the zoo for improvements. And so your options are to permit charging an entry fee, to modify that request, or to deny it. Staff do recommend alternative one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request to charge an entry fee as presented.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve event requests from Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo related to a wild affair. Kristi?
So the requests related to a wild affair are to approve closing the zoo on September 24th for event setup, to charge attendees an entry fee, and to serve alcohol during the event. Of course, your alternatives are to approve those, modify the request, or to deny those. We recommend alternative one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request as presented to the commission.
I'll second. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? The only thing I'd like to point out is that this event does raise a significant amount of funds for the zoo in that financial note, so it's a good event. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item 6E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an event request from Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo for Boo at the Zoo, 2022.
So related to Boo at the Zoo, this is our 27th year for one of the most popular events in town. The requests are, and it's also one of the top two fundraisers for the zoo, are to allow closing of the zoo for the day of the event for setup, charging an event entry fee for those who come. And you can approve all those requests, modify them, or deny them. We do recommend alternative one.
I remove that we recommend alternative. Approve, governing body may approve the request to close the zoo the first day of the event or event setup and charge the event, charge the event attendees an admission fee.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thanks, Kristi.
That passes. Well, thank you, Kristi.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I'd report that the city manager would like to celebrate the occasion of receiving the Association of Contractors of Kansas, Inc. Award, the Award of Honor. And this was in relation to Garden Rapids at the Big Pool. So Aaron was there accepting the award. He can tell you a little bit about, more about it.
Yes, so this award is given to construction projects throughout Kansas that show creativity initiative. One of the big factors is they finish on time and on budget. With our project, which was a big push to finish on time, so it's quite the big deal. And it isn't, it wasn't for just pools. So, you know, wide-ranging projects from churches to office buildings, et cetera. So pretty big recognition for McCallan Garden and the city of Garden City locally, through the local chapter of AGC of Kansas, so.
Good deal.
That's awesome.
Very nice.
Congratulations.
We'd also like to celebrate the receiving of the Certificate of Achievement and Financial Reporting for 2020. And so this would have been last year's audit that audited the previous year's finances. So this is a, continues to be a, an achievement that the city of Garden City has, through the work of our staff and Service and Finance Department and all the department heads and their administrative capacities try to pursue. And so we're proud of receiving that award yet another year. Then the rest of those items are matters of information or staff reports. We're catching up in Service and Finance, given the closing of the end of the year and the auditors present. So you have year-end 2021, also January and February's monthly financial report there with you. If you've got any questions on those, we'd like to try to answer them. All right, and then there's a communication from, or correspondence from Cox Communications, and this is about their lineup changes. They're required to provide us those updates according to their franchise. That is the latest one. So with that, I'll draw your attention to meetings of note. Any of those items needing RSVPs, please do those through C-LIN. If there aren't any questions on those, we'll move to 9A. That's the appropriation ordinance, and if approved, it would be appropriation ordinance number 2551-2022A.
And I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance 2551-2022A.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Okay, item A is a 130 public hearing. We'll skip over that. We've got time to at least take one other item. We'll move to 10B if that's all right.
Yep.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from LR, Low Density Residential, to R1, Single Family Residential, for the property generally located west of Hawthorne Way and east of Chapel Heights Drive. If approved, this would be ordinance number 2924-2022.
Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. So for your consideration today, as Matt stated, the background to this is this is, the applicant is Chapel Heights LLC. They recently, they're requesting this rezoned property generally located at the Hawthorne Way in East Chapel Heights Drive from LR, which is Low Density Residential, to the R1 Single Family Residential District. The proposed area is compatible and in line with the rest of their phasing of development as we've gone through this. The land was annexed into the city in 2015. The property remains own LR during all this time. Staff analysis, the proposed use of the property as single-family residence is consistent with the area's general development. The property has just recently been platted. The governing body may approve the request according to the criteria in section 27.040. Below is the list of that criteria. Planning Commission did meet, seven members present, seven members voted in favor of this. Alternative number one, the, to adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Number two, override the Planning Commission's recommendation by two-thirds majority vote. Or alternative number three, return the recommendation to the Planning Commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. Staff recommendation is alternative number one.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2924-2022.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to take item C. 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution to designate the future Custom Milestone Edition as a rural housing incentive district within the city. And if approved, this would be Resolution 2903-2022.
Well, welcome again. So for this, this is a first step of our RHID process. State of Kansas passed a statute that allows cities of certain population within counties of certain population to offer incentives for affordable housing. Garden City meets the qualifications required by the state and is able to establish such RHIDs pending the approval of the Secretary of Commerce. In order to obtain approval from the Secretary of Commerce, the city must first pass a resolution making certain findings and determinations as to the availability of housing within the city. Staff will then publish the resolution and send the required information to the Secretary of Commerce for approval. The resolution includes one potential RHID property that was not considered in the previous resolutions and will be known as Custom Milestone Edition. The area of the property is approximately 8.8 acres and is generally located at the Bellevue Avenue and 8th Street. The developer at this time intends to build single-family homes. The south lot of the property was previously approved as a potential RHID property by the governing body on June 1st, 2021, through the Resolution 2878-2021. The developer has since purchased the north lot to expand the future development. The resolution will repeal the Resolution Number 2878-2021 and establish a new boundary for the Custom Milestone Edition. Alternatives, number one, the governing body may approve the attached resolution. And number two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends approval of the resolution. At this time, if you have any questions.
Any questions?
I'll make the motion. We approve Resolution 2903-2022.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve lease purchase financing for a 2020 GS products side loader for use in solid waste department. If approved, this would be Resolution Number 2904-2022. Emily?
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Emily Burns, the Assistant Finance Director. The governing body is asked to consider and approve lease purchase financing for 2022 GS products side loader trash truck for solid waste. In February, during the February 15th meeting, the governing body approved lease purchase of the truck with a three-year term through leasing to Inc. Alternatives, approve the resolution for lease purchase financing with leasing to Inc. Or do not approve the resolution for lease purchasing financing with leasing to Inc. Staff recommends the lease purchase financing option with leasing to Inc. Approval for the resolution and approval for the mayor to sign the lease purchase document.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for lease purchase financing with leasing to Inc.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Item E, the governing body is asked to review and approve a resolution regarding the city's responding to a financial emergency plan. And if this is approved, it would be Resolution Number 2905-2022. And Emily, am I doing this one or are you doing this?
It's OT.
You go ahead. If you're ready, you can, you can do it. I just forgot if I volunteered or not.
Well, I'll just summarize. In 2021, the city did declare a financial emergency due to the increase in energy costs in February. April 6th, we were no longer in a financial emergency. And as of December 31st, 2021, we are not in a financial emergency.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2905-2022.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We, this did say that we do have a plan in place, though, correct?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
This is just the yearly.
Yeah, just for an overview, we began this as part, as one of our guidelines. I believe there's 14 in our, in the city's financial management plan. So annually, and it happens in the first quarter, based on your year-end findings, your year-end financial reports, the commission will do a review and consider a resolution proclaiming that you either are or are not in a financial emergency. And so it's really one of the steps in that financial management plan that speak to transparency of your finances. And so that's, that's why we've been doing this. And if you look back through our minutes, we've, I think we've been doing it since 2016 when we first adopted the, the financial management plan.
Any other discussion? We'll entertain a motion. Oh, did we already?
It's already got.
Oh, we've already got a motion. We just need to vote.
We just need to vote, yeah.
Yeah, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. We could have passed it twice.
We've still, we've still got a few minutes, so let's, it's all right, we'll move to 12A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the goals and strategic objectives for 2022 through 2023, ratifying the work done at your most recent goal-setting retreat. So the work's been divided into the, the following goals. One of them is to improve transportation infrastructure. There's a category there. It has a dozen or so items. Then research and plan the development of major community projects. And so there's a variety of major community projects, some of which are pretty clearly city projects. Others, which would involve our, either partnership or support of other entities taking on major community projects. And there's an overarching goal of developing policy and optimizing internal operations. There's some things that either speak to internal, things that are internally important, sort of administrative functions, a lot of systems in there. And then there's some items that talk about sort of intergovernmental relationships. There's an overarching goal of maintain and develop infrastructure. An overarching goal to develop, to meet the demand and explore new development tactics. This is really aimed at, you know, meeting some unmet demand as it relates to housing and trying to kind of encourage staff to look into additional creativity in that regard and working with some of our partners to cut into the housing deficit. An overarching goal to improve and expand parks and public spaces. And you'll see about a dozen or so items that were brought up at the, at the retreat. And, you know, it would be staff's intention over the next 12 months. And then as we move into the development of the 2024 budget and 2023. So that's why we give that kind of 12 to 18-month goal, to do the research necessary to see if the commission wants to accomplish this stuff or at least, at least take the first step in exploring some of these ideas. Some of these are pretty clear, measurable objectives, have a little bit more of a tone of, hey, go get this done. And then other ones are, hey, of the thousand things out there, we want you to research. Here's the dozen or so we'd like you to focus on in the next 12 months. Let's research that as a first step and see if there's resolve on the commission to take subsequent steps after that. And hopefully you think that this is a fair representation of what you talked about at your retreat.
Yeah. I thought it was a good process this year, and I think this is good action words to, sometimes it is just a half of an idea or not completely fleshed out in the process. But we get that through this document. And I also, I was about to say enjoy, but that's just me liking data. I also appreciate the sorting that we have inside of those different goals to kind of give a higher priority and a little bit lower priority based on what the commission felt during that process.
Very nice.
Any other comments before we go ahead and take action on it?
I move to approve the 2022, 2023 goals and strategic objectives.
Second.
Right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Those pass. Thank you.
So the clock on mine says 1:29. I think I can drag out the presentation long enough. We'll go to the 130 public hearing. This is item 10A on your agenda. Item 10A, 1:30 public hearing regarding the governing body's consideration of adopting a project plan for the Western Kansas Corridor Tax Increment Financing District located in Finney County at the northeast corner of the North Interchange of US 5400 and US 83. Following the public hearing, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance adopting the Western Kansas Corridor LLC TIF project plan. If approved, this would be ordinance Number 2925-2022. And am I to, am I to call the?
They should be called into the conference line. So it's the dialing out, there should be two phone numbers on your sheet.
Okay. And they're, they're expecting to be part of this conversation regardless, not just if needed, is that correct?
No, if needed.
Okay.
They're just on the conference line.
All right. Why don't I go ahead and just call them?
Please enter a participant code.
Is there anybody on this line?
Hello, Kevin, name is Paul Snally here.
Hi, Kevin. This is Matt Allen. We're in a city commission meeting. We just opened the public hearing, so can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, we'll proceed with the public hearing. I'll now turn this over to Lorna.
Sorry. So again, this is just the next step in the process. We've brought this project to you, and this project is not located within the corporate limits of the city of Garden City. However, counties are not allowed to establish tax increment finance district. Cities are, even in unincorporated areas. So that's where we are on this, and if you have any questions, we're happy to answer those. I will tell you, things are moving along well with the project, and, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to get some bids out for infrastructure quickly and get started on it.
This is just one of the steps in the whole process that we have to go through for, for this project to move forward, correct?
Yes, this is just another one of the steps. The county has been very gracious all along, and they fully appreciate that, that you are having to do some of the work on this project, and they're, they're the beneficiaries of that, but certainly have been supportive of the project and supportive of the work that you've done as well.
So after this, well, after this is, if this is approved, what's the next step?
We're good to go.
Wow, that's great.
That's good. It's exciting.
All right.
It is exciting.
All right. Is there any comment from the public? Hearing none.
Is there any comments from either of the parties on the line or at the conclusion of the public hearing part?
No.
All right. We'll, we'll close the public meeting then, and we will take up this as business.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2925-2022. Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, for those joining on the phone, if you couldn't hear, the, the item passed, so congratulations. Thanks for calling in.
Excellent, thank you.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve the bid from Crossland Construction Company, Inc. in the amount of $26,192,047.80 for the construction of the Garden City Regional Airport Terminal. Rochelle?
Good afternoon. So we're about five years into this process for the terminal project. So a little background's on that. We started it in 2017 with a terminal area plan that provided a very thorough analysis of our current terminal, our future goals, federal requirements, everything. That turned into a recommendation for new construction for a terminal. So then we started into looking for funding sources, and we also went into the design of the terminal construction. So we are just finishing up the design. We went out to bid in February, and we received one bid from Crossland Construction. And the, they are the sole bidder, however, they've met all the requirements to be a responsive bid. There's additional documentation from HNTV, which is our engineering and architecture firm that's handling this project for us. And so we're asking for consideration to approve the bid.
All right.
I'll make a motion, we approve the bid from Crossland Construction Company for the construction of the regional airport terminal.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I was just curious. I had a question that was asked to me the other day. Is, and I don't remember, but I believe that the terminal design, would it be capable of housing another airline if that were to charter, if we were to charter another airline?
Yes.
Option for just what we're building for today?
Correct. The current terminal design is projected for a 30-year plan, although it probably will last us another 70, 100 years, hopefully. But it does need the accommodation to have multiple airlines and be able to process frequent flights throughout the day with a variant of aircraft sizes and different airlines. So yes, it does accommodate our current situation, but as well as future growth.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say, congratulations getting the project.
Thank you.
Yes.
Very excited.
Very excited.
All right, anything else? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Rochelle.
Thank you.
Yeah, good job.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider staff's request to issue a request for proposal for an indoor ice arena market feasibility study, preliminary concept design, and project cost estimate. Aaron?
Afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. What you have before you is a draft RFP to explore the feasibility of indoor ice arena. In the background, you can see kind of what we outlined as the scope of services as far as providing market analysis, market analysis on the need and want, conceptual design and estimated construction cost, you know, operational insights for one or two sheets of ice, and third-party management group was something else we want to explore along with staff capacity if we try to manage that internally. And then analysis on the facility's future ongoing maintenance, et cetera. What does that look like? And itemize, provide pricing estimates for any associated equipment, because obviously there's some specialty equipment that comes along with that, that we'd want to know about. And any other necessary information that we didn't have the foresight to put in the scope of services, so. And part of this would be accomplishing pricing. They would be submitting pricing along with this for the cost of something like this. So with that, I'll be happy to answer questions. Well, let me say this first. Really what we're doing here is, is seeking your guidance on whether to move forward with this or not, and therefore you see the alternatives below. You can approve that as well as approving the mayor to sign the eventual contract that comes with the RFP. We would bring that back in front of you once we completed the RFP process. Obviously, you could deny it, or you could direct us to do something else. So with that, I'll answer questions.
So Aaron, would this be a, are you, like, you know, your gymnastics facility is a standalone facility. Are you thinking the same thing, a standalone facility? Are you thinking of adding it on to a bigger complex? Or just curious about what your long-range plans are for if this is something that's feasible to do?
I think the way this is listed right here, it would be, you'd be looking at potentially a standalone facility with either one or two sheets of ice. We're asking them to review both. You know, as, if we were to move forward with this, as that developed, I mean, depending on what other items are out there, we could look at combining that with something else.
So in your capacity with the recommission, have you had a lot of interest in the community as far as having a standalone facility like this? Or as Commissioner Unruh said, would it be part of a larger facility or?
So again, this was a goal listed out in the 2021 Commission Goals, and that's why we're here today to move forward with that. I have not been directly approached outside of that from the public. But again, part of this is to determine
Sure.
what that interest level would be.
Well, I know it was also listed in the 2022 goals as well, and I know it's on, on the goal sheet there, so I would.
Well, I just have one more question as far as, is there dual use for that? So when it, when it's not being used as an ice rink, can it be used as something else? I'm curious about.
Yeah, generally, we're, we're not in the climate to run ice year-round. It wouldn't, it wouldn't, I don't know a whole bunch about it, but what I do know is we're too far, it becomes very costly to try to run it year-round, and you would transition that facility to either hard surface play, you could do turf play in it, even court, you could bring in temporary court kind of through the summer months where it would reduce the cost of running the cooling plant.
And do you know kind of an estimated cost of what an RFP would cost for a feasibility study?
Generally speaking, a standard feasibility study, and keep in mind, these numbers may be outdated the way things are going.
Right.
Is approximately $40,000. What's kind of different about this one is we are asking for some design insights, so I don't know what that will, how that'll impact costs.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of the RFP as presented.
And then, is that item two? Because there's.
Item one.
Okay, and then the mayor appointed Commissioner to serve as on the, somebody, okay. So that's alternative one. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I think it would be interesting just to kind of hear, I mean, I'm just, you, you wanted to gather kind of our opinion on it, but I think like a lot of the design comes in after what, you know, whoever we hire to kind of do the assessment and the, you know, the, the study and get the public's information on it. So I think, I think it would be valuable for us to just kind of gather that information to see where, where it could go. I know there's, there's some interest, but I don't know as far as outside of my group how, you know, how interested people are about it. So I, I think for, for me, I would definitely say like we could just.
Something like what we did for the, when we transitioned the Big Pool into
Yes, correct.
where we went out and gathered a lot of input on what the community would like to see and other communities surrounding, probably.
Yep.
I think a multi-use facility too, knowing that there's a definite plan for, you know, when there isn't, you know, isn't ice, and so how that could also be utilized and by what groups.
And it, it could be five years down the road, it could be 10, so we don't know. But I, I think it'd be a good addition someday.
And is there a way that you could put, I don't know, you know, like in the feasibility study, here's, I'm thinking, I mean, and I can't even believe I'm questioning this, being from North Dakota, you know, hockey land. But, you know, as far as like a timeline of, of, you know, what it could look like, you know, how quickly it could be built, or just like in the future, what the steps might be, you know, what the long-term goal could be.
So adding that in as a part of the services.
I'm just kind of curious. I, my biggest concern is that, that we build it and there'll be, you know, that initial excitement, and then long-term, you know, it, it may just kind of wane a little bit, and I'd hate to see that happen. And so, you know, it's, it could be a pretty large investment if, if it's determined that it, you know, to go forward. And so I just, I guess I'm just looking at it long-term, you know, and, and what the capacity could be in the future.
So I would, I believe that would be included in that market analysis for the one.
Right.
They, they would, to refer back to the pool, they looked beyond just year one and two. They really looked at what does it look like in five years after you've had that initial bump?
Okay.
All right. All right, then all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. And then let me know if any commissioners are interested in sitting on that committee. If not, I will sit on the review committee. So just let me know after the fact, and we can get that going.
I think you would be a good fit.
I think considering that.
I'm, I'm, I'll reopen anybody, so, but I will do that if.
My experience.
Okay, well, I feel like there's a consensus then that I'll, that I'll approve, appoint myself to that committee.
Thanks, Aaron. Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a lease extension and amendments for the Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo. Kristi?
Good afternoon again. The Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo, which is a 501(c)(3) that raises funds for zoo improvements, has two leases with the city for property at the zoo. One is in the Fennip Center for Conservation Education for office space. The other is the area known as the Safari Shop, which also has storage area related to it. Both of those leases are up for extension, and also we have some amendments that, as of 2020, the Carousel Pavilion and the concession area known as the Wild Dog Stop were built and are operating by the Friends. So those spaces are being added to the Safari Shop lease with all the details included related to that. And we're also looking at, instead of having to come to you every five years and ask for these to be renewed, to have them renew automatically unless either party decides to say no. So before you is that request to extend those leases and accept those amendments. So you can do that, or you can choose not to extend or amend the leases. We do recommend alternative one.
Yeah, I move that the governing body extend and amend the leases.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Right, that passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the purchase, the purchase distribution transformers from Anextor Wesco in the amount of $576,958.78. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. It's my fault I left the "of." The governing body at its February 1st, 2022 regularly scheduled meeting had approved the 2022 distribution transformer bid to Anextor Wesco, who's the distributor, for $486,707.1, as it was the lowest bid of all of the bids we had received that met the specifications. However, on February 25th, 2022, Ermco, the manufacturer of the transformers, notified Anextor Wesco that they could not fulfill the contract due to the lack of their overall production capabilities that were connected to supply chain difficulties. So as a result, staff, we reached out to the second lowest bidder to see if the bid they had submitted was still valid, and it was not. They could not guarantee those prices anymore. Everything is just gone kind of crazy. Anyway, they, Anextor Wesco agreed to work with us to try to fulfill that, that bid. So they reached out to General Electric, who is another transformer manufacturer, and asked them if they would be capable of producing the units that we needed that was in that bid specification. GE has committed to fulfilling the transformer order. We have that agreement until April 1st of 2022, and then they can no longer guarantee it. The additional cost to move from Ermco to General Electric is an increase of $90,251.78. Transformers that GE bid, they all meet the same specifications, they meet the required specifications, they actually have a faster delivery time. So the alternatives would be to authorize the purchase of the 2022 General Electric distribution transformers from Anextor Wesco for $576,958.78. Do not approve the purchase or direct staff to rebid the entire 2022 distribution transformer bid. Staff recommends alternative one. That would be to award the, allow General Electric to fulfill this bid. The funding for this purchase will come from the electric department's transformer code, which has a balance of $375,000 in it, and then the remaining $201,958.78 will come from cash reserves that we budget every year and carry over. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
It's a lot of inflation. Yeah, I move that we authorize the purchase of the 2022 General Electric distribution transformers from, I don't know how you say their name, Exler Wesco for $576,958.78.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. Thanks, Mike.
Item twelve F, the governing body is asked to consider and up, is asked to consider updated design details for the municipal court mural project presented by artist Michael Knutson and authorize the mayor to sign a contract commissioning the mural.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll go ahead and present from here since I'm not really the main focus on this item. But a bit of background, uh, on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, the governing body authorized staff to issue a request for proposals for a mural, uh, to decorate the North Wall of the Municipal Court Evidence Building. On October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, the governing body approved a recommendation from the RFP Review Committee to select Michael Knutson as the artist for the mural. Uh, and then on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, we held a pre-meeting to discuss the details of the mural in more detail. During that pre-meeting, three details were established. In regards to the budget, the governing body decided, uh, that you would prefer to pay the whole cost of the project, which in the application was listed as nineteen thousand, six hundred and four dollars and fifty-one cents as opposed to the fifteen thousand dollars listed in the RFP. We also agreed to shift the schedule, uh, for the mural as the artist explained that it would not be feasible to paint the mural before the building was, uh, open for use just based on temperatures. And third, and most relevant to today, uh, you requested that, uh, a more detailed, uh, design for the mural be created and then brought before the commission, uh, in order to be reviewed for final approval. So before I turn it over to Michael Knutson, uh, what the, uh, what staff needs from you today is a couple of things. Uh, we need to know whether you all are okay with the design as presented or if there are changes that you would like. And if you are okay with authorizing the mayor to sign a contract commissioning the mural. If you all do approve that contract, then staff will work with the artist and the city attorney to draft a contract based on the details established in this meeting and previous meetings. So the alternatives are to authorize the mayor to sign a contract commissioning the mural as presented. Alternative two, authorize the mayor to sign a contract commissioning the mural with suggested changes. Alternative three, suggest changes to the mural and do not authorize the mayor to sign a contract at this time. In that case, we would bring it, uh, forward as a feature item. Or alternative four, reject the mural design and instruct staff on how to proceed. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the artist.
Mike, thank you, Stuart. Commissioners and Mayor. I'm Michael Knutson and I have brought my, uh, mock-up here. And so this is a one inch per one foot scale, I'm bringing an oil painting, oops, sorry. Of, uh, the mural that we discussed, uh, earlier. And so as we can see, this is consisting of, I've been calling it the majestic butterfly mural. Uh, and we had talked about children and I'm still in, uh, contact with Garden City Arts and we have a contest planned for April to, uh, a coloring contest. So it's gonna award children based on merit of their artistic abilities to be placed in the mural. It's harder to find children to model, diverse group of children without just using nepotism. That's one with things, I ask people, oh, I've got a perfect cousin or this and that. And so we have a coloring contest that will happen with Garden City's Arts Annual Sidewalk Shop Competition. So we'll have pages that are gonna be based from the scene of the mural. That's, young people can color and design and encourage their own thing. And then we'll have a contest where we're either gonna display them at the library or an alternative location. Uh, and then pick a couple of kids to pose for the painting and interview them to take place in here. Any questions?
I think it looks great.
So you're still adding children into this, into this mural? From the original one that we saw before?
Yeah, correct.
And so a couple ideas would be perhaps somebody larger looking at this way, kids playing, here we have. And it is a lot longer than I would have anticipated from seeing it. And so we do have some.
Not trying to get them to buy pizza.
They could be moved inside of there and, uh, I'm looking to have about three into five each other. I usually want odd numbers that would be interacting with them. And so it would be pretty big. I've also included my little selfie stations. So this would be mom or dad or teenagers. And then this would be the young people would be able to stand in front of it. And so this is about a six-foot figure and this is about a three-foot figure.
Right. Cool.
So the image of the person you had on the lower left corner, are you thinking that's an adult, you said?
I'm thinking I want children there.
Okay.
In the original mock-up, we had a large space and I think we decided that smaller figures, small bodies, uh, would be more appropriate.
Just for clarity, when you said an adult, that's, you're, you're cutting out an average adult-sized person in relationship.
Putting in.
What they would be. Those aren't gonna be in.
No.
No.
This is just showing you the skill because.
Like the selfie.
That was locked in the price.
Yeah, very cool.
And so then upon completion, uh, once those kids are chosen, they'll be put into this mural or this image. Uh, and then this will be given to be displayed inside the courthouse along with any other preparatory, even the watercolor, uh, sketch and maybe some interviews with the children and some sketches of that as well.
I think it looks amazing. I mean, I just, I love how, I mean, how you brought it to life, even just on that. It, I, I'm really excited about this project.
And like I said, all the plants are, uh, local, are Kansas native plants that attract, uh, butterflies. We wanna do right inside of the stems, the name of the plant so people can identify it in the post.
Great.
And then the stages of, uh, the caterpillar to butterfly.
Oh, I think this is gonna make a statement. I love it.
And once we approve, if we approve this timeline of getting this started and completed?
Uh, so we've, uh, the original timeline, we use, uh, we were supposed to meet on this, took a little bit more time in February. Uh, but as soon as we get this approved or supplies and we look at starting it in, uh, we'll be doing the kids' research through April. We'll have them figured out by May, have them in there and then start on June and then try to get it completed for the entire month of June. But then unraveling somewhere around, hopefully by Garden City Arts Art in the Park, which is in June, but it's July fourth.
That would be great.
So is the, is the caterpillar gonna be also like a, where you can crouch down and it looks like it's on your back?
Are you still planning on using some students from the community college to help complete this?
I was lucky enough to just attend the Kansas, oh, I always miss the Kansas, uh, Creative Arts Commission and Industries, uh, mural making conference that they just had this last week.
Very cool.
Uh, people from across the state and lots of, uh, good advice and good networking opportunity for, uh, processes and other things.
Well done, Mike.
Yeah.
Very, very well done.
Boy, this is the first event.
Yes, agreed.
Yeah, this is at least a very good first step in.
I know the GCPD was wanting bats. Get it? Gotham City. It's a DC joke, yeah.
That's awesome.
Well, I'll make the motion that we sign the contract commissioning the mural as presented, well, with the updates when you get the children and, uh, in there and everything.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Mike.
Very nice.
Item twelve G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the distribution of community grant funds as recommended by the Community Health Advisory Board. Stuart?
Good afternoon, once again, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, so this is for the twenty twenty-two community grant. I apologize, there's a little bit of a complicated, uh, issue on here, but I'll go over the basics first. Uh, so we were lucky enough to have eight agencies submit applications for the grant with requests totaling forty thousand, seven hundred dollars and eight cents. Uh, the city commission authorized, uh, an annual budget of thirty thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, for the community grant. And additionally, uh, fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents rolled over from the twenty twenty-one grant cycle, leaving a budget for this year of forty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents. On February eighth, twenty twenty-two, uh, the Community Health Advisory Board met during its regularly scheduled meeting to review applications and recommends awarding thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and eight cents to the following agencies. Five thousand and Dreams Child Care, uh, five thousand to Finney County Municipal Alliance, seven hundred and thirty dollars and eight cents to Magic's Hope, twenty-five hundred dollars to Miles and Smiles, zero dollars, gee, we jumped down a bit. We'll say zero dollars to Silver Sage Renaissance Festival, uh, five thousand dollars to Salvation Army, uh, eight thousand dollars to St. Catherine Hospital Foundation and five thousand dollars to Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center. The remaining funds, which I realize, uh, too late, were, uh, off on this memo, I apologize. Uh, there's fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-two cents left over, which, uh, the Community Health Advisory Board has stated intends to save for emergencies such as in twenty nineteen, when community daycare had, I believe it was a, a main break and they needed to request funds as well as organizations that couldn't have feasibly applied for the, uh, grant in time, whether there were safe staffing issues or something like that. And then the other funds rolled over to twenty twenty-three. Uh, so the main complication here is that a couple of the organizations, both Silver Sage Renaissance Festival and Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center, applied to both the, uh, community grant and the art grant. Uh, this isn't really an issue for Silver Sage Renaissance Festival because the Community Health Advisory Board ultimately, uh, voted not to recommend any funds. Um, but it, uh, it does relate to the funds for Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center. Uh, in twenty twelve, when the city commission voted to create the art grant, um, by commission action, not by resolution, they included guide, or you all included guidelines in there for the community grant program that would deem applicants ineligible for the community grant if they were eligible for either the AFAT grant or the art grant. And I should note that this doesn't go in reverse. So if you're eligible for the community grant, that doesn't make you ineligible for the art grant. And these eligibility guidelines are made known in the grant application. Staff did bring this conflict to CHAB's attention at their March eighth meeting, but CHAB ultimately voted to maintain its recommendation and leave the, uh, question of the five thousand dollars to the governing body's discretion. And so I should note that, uh, Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center was, uh, recommended five thousand dollars for this grant and only two thousand dollars for the art grant. Uh, so the alternatives here are to approve CHAB's recommendation to award the full thirty-one thousand dollars, uh, thirty, thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and eight cents in community grants to six agencies plus, uh, the five thousand dollars for Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center and consider them eligible for both grants. Alternative two is to approve CHAB's recommendations, uh, for that full amount to all of the organizations listed, including Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center and then make them ineligible for funding under, uh, for the art grant, which would then make them eligible for the community grant under the twenty-twelve guidelines. Alternative three, approve CHAB's recommendations minus the five thousand dollars to Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center, deeming them ineligible for the community grant based on the twenty-twelve guidelines. Uh, alternative four, modify CHAB's recommendation beyond that five thousand dollars in question. Or alternative five, do not approve CHAB's recommendations and send them, uh, send it back to them for further review. Like I said, it's a little more complicated than your typical grant. I apologize for that. I also believe we have a representative from Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center here. If you all would be interested in hearing their opinion on the matter.
Yes. Oh.
Hello.
Hi, thank you for having me here. I'm LaCrisha Holterman and, um, we appreciate all of your guys' support and we didn't realize about both of those. So, um, we would prefer if we could get the community grant as, um, it's for the casino fundraiser because we make no funds off of the gaming tables and it was a huge success this year, um, to just have all the funds for all the services and not just art. But we appreciate any support that we would receive from you guys, so.
Now, so to me, my question is which one did you prefer?
Right.
Funding?
Yes, prefer for the casino fundraiser since, um, we would be eating that money. So if it covers the gaming tables, cause we can't make money off of that, to provide services, so.
Thank you.
I think I had just a question for Stuart and I apologize if, I kind of got confused on, there is no really a, a guideline for a limit, right? For, for dollar number? I think I kind of, when I read that the first time this weekend, I kind of maybe convinced myself that there was a guideline of five thousand dollar max, but after reading it or hearing it out loud, I don't think there was, correct?
Not on this grant, there was the six thousand dollar limit for the first half of the AFAT grant, but that's the only grant that we have a specific limit on, other than obviously staying within the full funding.
Okay. Thank you.
As well as kind of the unwritten rule of not funding both at the same time. That was previous commissions, kind, you know, we kind of were going down that road and the commission at the time said, it's either one or the other. We can't, we don't wanna start that, we're, we're funding an organization for both projects. So they came up with that kind of rule.
Is there a way to highlight that better on the application so that, cause I know, like, when, when you're writing grants, there's, there's a lot of information, especially if you're writing multiple grants. And so if there is a way to highlight that, just so that people would know that it might be a benefit?
Absolutely, and there were a few things, uh, last time around that Community Health Advisory Board wanted us to put in, bold red letters and that's something we can add.
Okay.
Uh, I'm also gonna do a more dedicated job next time, reaching out to organizations. I talked to them this time and said, you know, we'll see how it plays out, uh, hoping that the order would make things a little cleaner at the committee level. It didn't quite come out that way, so, uh, the plan for next year is to say, there is a conflict here. Could you choose one or the other, please?
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, I move that we approve the CHAB recommendation to award thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and eight cents in community grant funds to the six agencies as outlined and consider Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center eligible for the community grant funding despite their application for the community art grant.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes.
Item G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the distribution of community grant fund. Oh, I'm sorry, item H. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a plan for future art grant committee appointments. Stuart?
I hope you all aren't getting sick of me, cause I've got a few more out of this as well. Uh, so before we get to the art grant itself, uh, there is an issue with the art grant committee that staff noticed, uh, going into the meeting of this year. Looking at past actions from the city commission regarding, uh, the art grant committee, realized that all three members of the committee are actually serving on expired terms. Uh, so of the members are Shawna Deal, Melissa Gallegos and Troy Nanninga. And they've been, uh, their terms would have expired in, at the end of twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen and twenty eighteen respectively. My best understanding of how this happened is that this grant has changed hands, uh, two times in the last six years and since it's something that only meets annually, it just, I think ended up slipping under the radar, so we apologize for that. Staff does really appreciate the dedication of these art grant committee members for promoting arts in Garden City. They've put in a lot of time over the years. Uh, but both staff and the committee members recognize that this committee needs to return regular appointments. So staff has created a plan for members' terms going forward to get back on track. And there is four things, uh, we'd like to achieve with this plan. First and foremost, ensuring that there's regular appointments so the governing body has its proper oversight and that members of the community have opportunities to serve. Uh, second, ensure that the terms are staggered as standard on cities advisory committees. Third, make sure there's continuity among the committee members so we don't end up in a situation where all three members have never worked on the art grant before. It'll just make the process a lot smoother. And fourth, make sure that the funds for the twenty twenty-two art grant are swiftly delivered. So in this case, sort of recognizing, uh, this year's, uh, recommendations as coming from somewhat legitimate, uh, committee. Uh, so in order to achieve these goals, uh, staff proposes the following steps. So today, uh, we ask you to appoint Melissa Gallegos and Shawna Deal to temporary terms ending on December thirty-first of this year and to create that continuity, appointing Troy Nanninga, who is the, uh, latest member of the board to a slightly longer term ending December thirty-first, uh, of next year. Then towards the end of this year, uh, or beginning of next year, as we gear up for the twenty twenty-three art grant, uh, and Melissa and Shawna's terms expire, appoint two new members, one that would serve on a proper, full, three-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and another, uh, who would serve in a bridge two-year term ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. That would ensure that in subsequent years, uh, we could maintain a staggered three-year schedule where, uh, one applicant a year is going to be appointed. And I did include a sort of, uh, visual schedule of this, uh, the attachments to make it a little more clear. Uh, that's gonna be on the next page because it's, it's a, a lot of steps, so hopefully this helps a bit. Uh, this year, we would keep the same people on, on the committee. They'd all be carryovers from expired terms. Uh, next year, we'd have the one carryover being Troy, uh, one new member on a full term and one on a shortened term. Twenty twenty-four, all three members would be new and only one of them would be on a shortened term. And then starting in twenty twenty-five, everything would be back to normal. All the terms would be staggered, all of them would be three years and all of them would have been appointed by the city commission at a proper time. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that was a lot.
I move to approve the proposed schedule and appoint Melissa Gallegos, Shawna Deal and Troy Nanninga to the requested terms.
A second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes.
Item I, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the distribution of art grant funds. Stuart?
And now onto the art grant itself. So, a- as we've just gone through, um, Melissa Gallegos, Shawna Deal and Troy Nanninga did make the recommendations for the twenty twenty-two art grant. Shawna Deal, and Troy Nanga did make the recommendations for the 2022 art grant, and they've now been appointed to serve for this year. The City Commission allocates $15,000 from the social funding line item to fund the art grant program for this fiscal year. The city received actually seven applications requesting a total of $28,710. And the art grant selection committee recommends awarding $15,000 to five of those applicants as outlined below. So $7,250 to Garden City Arts, $0 to High Plains Public Radio, $2,000 to Silver Sage Renaissance Festival, $1,750 to Southwest Kansas Community Concerts, $2,000 to Tumbleweed Festival, $2,000 to Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center, which I will note in the previous item, you all did not disqualify from this art grant, so you all are able to choose to do with that what you will, and design and line for $0. So the alternatives are to approve the art grant committee's recommendation and award $15,000 to a total of five applicants, alter the art grant committee's recommendation and award funding as the governing body sees fit, or do not approve the art grant committee's recommendations and send the item back to them for further review. And of course, the art grant committee recommends alternative one.
So I'd like to alter it and not fund Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center. So I would make a motion to alter the arts grant committee's recommendation and award the funding for $13,000 to the other organizations.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes.
Thank you. Item J, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the distribution of the second portion of the $50,000 of AFAC funds as recommended by the Livewell Finney County Board.
One last grant, and then you're rid of me. So this is for the second half of the AFAC grant. As a reminder, this is for drug and alcohol abuse prevention in our community. The first half was for applications for $6,000 or less. Those recommendations were given by staff and approved by both the City Commission and the County Commission. Now, the second half is for any larger recommendations, and those applications are reviewed by Livewell Finney County's Board. We got two applications this year, one from Big Brothers Big Sisters to fund the maintenance and expansion of their cornerstone one-to-one mentoring program, and one from Real Men Real Leaders for $8,000 for their leadership program. Livewell Finney County reviewed these applications and recommended $13,000 for Big Brothers Big Sisters, and $7,333 for Real Men Real Leaders, for a total of $20,333 for the second portion of the AFAC funds. Your alternatives are to approve the recommendation to award both applicants as recommended. Alternative two, alter the recommendation and award funding as the governing body sees fit. Alternative three, do not approve the recommendation and send the item back for further review. Livewell Finney County's Board, of course, recommends alternative one.
I'll make a motion. We approve the recommendation to award both applicants as recommended by the Livewell Finney County Board.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you.
Item K, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the recommendation to the United States Department of Transportation to accept the proposal from American Airlines to provide essential air service at Garden City Regional Airport. Rochelle?
Good afternoon. As you're aware, the air service at the Garden City Regional Airport is under the essential air service program that is administered by the Department of Transportation. So every two years, the Department of Transportation requests proposals from airline service that are interested in providing Garden City air service. So in 2000, and, oh gosh, I just went blank, 12, was the first year, it's almost 10 years, that American Airlines first provided a service to our community. And so this year, the Department of Transportation went out for bits again. American Airlines provided their proposal for us, and so the consideration is to approve that. The annual subsidy did go up a little bit, but that is justified by the lower ridership from COVID, as well as the adjusting and increasing fuel costs, and just the overall cost of living in today's world. So with that, we are asking for you guys to approve the recommendation to award American Airlines service to our community, as well as a standard protocol for their proposal is to waive the 120-day notice from withdrawal. If for some reason they wanted to withdraw from our community, we waive that, and that's typically what we do every two years on that waiver.
I'll make a motion. We approve the recommendation to the United States Department of Transportation to accept the proposal from American Airlines to provide essential air service at Garden City Regional Airport.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just wait till we have a new terminal, there'll be a bidding wars.
That's our hope, yes, definitely. Yes, I hope so.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Rochelle.
Item L's an executive session. We don't anticipate any action following it. So if you'd like to do the consent agenda item and then commissioner reports, then we can take down the Channel 8 broadcast and Facebook broadcast, and then you all can conclude with your executive session. The consent agenda item, if you don't pull any of the items off, would be, the appropriate motion would be to approve item M1 through 7.
I'll make a motion. We approve Consent Agenda M1 through 7.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. And that leads us to the City Commissioner reports, leading off with Commissioner Cessna.
Yeah, great pre-meeting this morning about how we're moving forward with the Fire Department and their McGrath study. So a lot of work being done by the Fire Department, so great to see that. Also, you know, continuing to get awards on, you know, the things that we typically do, but we're getting awards on it, just showing how great a staff and community that we have. So congratulations on that. That's all I've got.
All right, Commissioner Ortiz.
Left it short. Oh, biggie. So I, I'm not gonna take it all either, so I'd like to match that.
Yeah, watch this.
Yeah. No, I'd just like to extend the appreciation that we have from anybody and everybody who was involved that got the appreciation awards with, you know, Big Pool and some of those major awards that were given. So don't think you were left out if you weren't mentioned here today. There was some great ideas, and especially with like the mural on the building. So some of those people that weren't mentioned, we know who you are. But I'd also like to extend the appreciation that we have from Garden City itself. I mean, our slogan is great, you know, we're, "The world grows here." And I see it on TV, I see it in books that I read. It's pretty amazing that you see that leadership that comes out of Garden City. I was watching a basketball game, which the ties that are in Texas A&M Basketball, D1 school at Corpus Christi, have basketball coaches that were coaches here at Garden City Community College, plus the players that are on that team that are playing for, they're in the dance right now, and they're playing for the spot to play against KU, who's a major competitor in the Big 12 basketball. But I'm kind of rooting for Corpus Christi. No, it would be an exciting game. But the ties that we have as leaderships and as people that start here in Garden City and move on to do bigger and brighter things, or not necessarily brighter, but like big and great things come out of Garden City. And the slogan that, you know, "The world grows here" is true, and the fact that those people do have that desire to make it big and be somebody and represent Garden City. Also, just looking on Facebook, is, you know, friends in the community who are traveling to Fort Worth, Texas, to, you know, a cook-off competition, and Crystal and Chris Gilliland are friends of mine from, they moved from, well, I graduated with Crystal in Deerfield, and then they moved to Lakeland, and now they live here in Garden City. But it's amazing to see like them and their friends who travel to that meat cooking competition, and, you know, they put up the flags of Garden City and the Buffalo and things like that. So just seeing that, it really excites me to know that there's people out here who really admire the Garden City and what we stand for. So kudos to those people who are out there, just taking that leadership and moving it forward. So appreciation goes all around.
All right. Commissioner Euler.
Very good pre-meeting. It's always nice when you can see a whole new leadership, just take on a department like the Fire Department, and just really run with it, especially with the McGrath report. And it was a very, very good pre-meeting, and so I'm excited to see just great things out of the Fire Department, although it is kind of disconcerting to hear all the sirens. I know that fires are up, and so, you know, you kind of say a prayer every time you hear a siren, just to make sure that everyone's safe. But I know fire safety is something that they're very concerned about as well. And so if there's anything that we can do to help with that, that would be great. Also, spring cleanup is coming up. I cannot believe it. I'm really, I love the fact that our city does a fall cleanup and a spring cleanup, and so that starts, what, April 4? So that's coming up in just a couple of weeks. You can go onto the Facebook page and kind of look at your district and see when your pickup will be. It's really a good service to take advantage of, and so I would encourage people to do that. And I drove by A Street at night, the new part of A Street, and it is probably the best-lit street in the city. It's like, what is that, that glow? And it was all the streetlights, and so it looks really good. So it's a really safe street to be around in the evening. So congratulations on that. That's all I have.
All right, Commissioner Andrew.
Well, I wanted to say thank you for the pre-meeting. Chief Ursick did something that was really unique and had his leadership team speak. A lot of them do a lot of speaking, so it was really neat to see faces with names and so. And then also to hear that they're really taking ownership of the department. It's not, he's really, is raising up a leadership team, and so that was really exciting, and I really enjoyed the way they presented. Thank you for all the veterans who are here today. That's really neat. And we appreciate not only the service, but all the things that they're doing, that they continue to do and stand up. I mean, the history that we have in our community of honoring veterans and the things that they've done for us, you know, in America, it's really important. And so anytime that we can say thank you and honor, thank you for your service and honor them, I think that's really important. I really enjoyed reading the grants. We have some super creative people in our community, and grant writing is not easy, and, you know, it's a lot of work. And so congratulations to all of those who are doing a lot with little. I mean, you know, $5,000 or $10,000 seems like a lot of money, or $15,000, but let me tell you, those dollars, they don't go, you know, it takes a lot, it doesn't go very far. And so I was excited to read the different grants and the ideas and the creativity of our people. And I really appreciate the way that you're impacting our community. I'm excited about the upcoming events. I haven't been to Booth and Zoo. I'm waiting for grandkids, so to take them to Booth and Zoo someday. And I'm not hinting to my kids yet, but I'm just saying, someday I would love to go back to Booth and Zoo. I know you can dress up and do things like that, but I'm gonna leave that to the other commissioners for that. And I just wanted to say thank you. Just excellent today, just excellent meeting.
All right. And I'd like to also do the same thing about, talk about the pre-meeting with Chief Ursick, and did a really good job, really good pre-meeting, really laid out the future that was outlined with the McGrath study, did a good job in involving the battalion chiefs. And really, it's one of those things, you're excited about the Fire Department and stuff like that, because of like the new building and stuff like that. After that meeting, I was really excited about where that department is going. And they're always respected in the community, just as firemen and all that, but it's one thing to be respectful in the community and be that, but then also to start making those steps that they're doing now is really neat to see. So it'll be fun to watch them as they grow, and as they grow into the third fire station, how that goes. I touched about a little bit, we were talking about ratifying our commission goals. I've had a great goal-setting retreat, and all the things that go into those goals, I mean, we give them, I don't know how many goals we're at this time, 40-ish about of goals, and
53.
53-ish goals, and then we leave it to Matt and the rest of the staff to kind of figure out how do we tackle these, at least make some progress on some of them. And you'll look back at the history of the goals, and a lot of those get actually completed within one year. So it was a good session, and I think we have some good goals going forward for this year, the next 12, 18 months. I'm excited to see Mike Knutson's progress on the mural. Like we were saying, it's probably one of the best first steps we can take in that direction. I mean, when you have something that looks like it's going to turn out that well, it gets people excited, and it's going to be a great addition. And I think the natural thing will be like, okay, what's gonna be our next one after this? Because that one looks like it's setting a really high bar and something that we can be proud of. I'd like to point out that Citizens Academy is starting sometime soon.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday. So it's probably too late to sign up for it if you haven't already. But if you haven't had a chance to go through that, that is an amazing program where you can learn about all the different things, learn about the Fire Department, not just that they have trucks, but all the other things that go into what makes the Fire Department work, and police, and rec, and all that stuff. So if you didn't make it this time, make sure you make a plan for next year to be a part of that Citizens Academy. And then finally, thanks to the American Legion on this proclaimed Kansas American Legion Day here in Garden City. Thank you for your service, and not just what you do for protection, but also what you do to make our community better. Like that proclamation says, it's not just about the protection of our country, but also building people from within in the youth and promoting American values, which is really important to our community. And then finally, also likewise, recognizing what Mosaic does and the proclamation for the Intellectual Development Disabilities Awareness Month, just their great work on integrating their population and with population in general, so that everybody in Garden City can have a better life. So with all those words, I think we are done and ready to go into executive session. If somebody wants to do that, if not, I can. I think it is, would just be with the commissioners.
Yep.
And
And for the specific purposes of the city manager's evaluation.
Yeah.
For how many minutes?
20 minutes? Do you think we can do 20 or 30?
I'd say 30.
30 minutes? Okay.
Just to be safe.
Okay.
Lot to be said.
Yeah. I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B1 pertaining to personal matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations because of the matter were discussed in open session and might invade the privacy of those discussed with just City Commission for the city manager's annual evaluation for 30 minutes, starting at, you want to take a break before that?
Yeah.
At 2:30? Starting at 2:30?
2:30, okay, to 3?
To 3.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we will go into executive session in three minutes.